November 9th, 2020, school board meeting session. Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little bit of a different arrangement with our board tonight, and it's because we have the doctors here, and we wanted to have good visibility for all of our board members. So Dr. Thompson is sitting in a different chair. She'll be moving back to her regular chair with our next board meeting. Mike, the COVID statement, please.
Yes. My name is Mike Willamy, clerk of the board. This regular public meeting of the Wichita Public Schools is taking place at the North High Lecture Hall, 1437 Rochester in Wichita. Due to the governor's declaration of emergency and due to health and safety concerns that exist because of COVID-19, no members of the public are present at this meeting. This meeting is available to be viewed live by the public in the following ways: WPTV on Cox Cable Channel 20, the district's website at www.usd259.org/wptvonline, and livestream apps for phone, Roku, and Apple TV by searching WPS-TV. After today's meeting, a recording of the meeting will be available on WPTV Cox Cable Channel 20 and the WPS YouTube channel. The agenda for this meeting was published on November 5th, 2020 at www.usd259.org/boe, under the BOE Minutes, Agendas and Minutes tab. The news media also received the main agenda and a portfolio containing the appendices. At this meeting, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak to assist the public in following the meeting. The usual public communications item that allows members of the public to speak at board meetings has been removed from the agenda. In its place, an email public comment item has been added. Information about how patrons can submit email public comment is included in the BOE agenda. Public communications will not be placed back in the agenda until the public again starts attending meetings. There will be an executive session at the end of this meeting. The following procedure will be used concerning the executive session. A motion will be presented by a board member that states the subject matter and justification under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for going into executive session. The motion will state the time the board will return from executive session. The live broadcast of the meeting will not end until the board returns from executive session and adjourns the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Under Reports, Service Employees International.
Welcome, Esau. We're glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you, President Logan, Dr. Thompson, board members. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. And I do have several pages of emails from staff members, and I have given each of you a copy of them. I blacked out some of the school names just so I didn't accidentally read and give specifics while I was at the meeting this evening, but I have given Mr. Hudspeth a copy with the names in it so that he's able to address some of the concerns. And I won't read through every one of them, but let me start over. My name is Esau Freeman, and I am the business representative for SEIU Local 513. And I represent all of the employees who are not principals or teachers. And essentially, people are still very concerned. I had one that said, "Good afternoon, Esau. I just wanted to express my concerns about tonight's BOE meeting. I feel certain that they're going to have students come back in the buildings on the 12th regardless of what the numbers in the county are. I feel that this is beyond foolhardy, and they are endangering not only student lives and the health, but of course, the teachers and the staff, too. I work at, and even with the hybrid model, these kids staying remote, there are going to be 800-plus kids in the building, and that doesn't feel safe at all. Frankly, I feel like we're getting thrown to the proverbial wolves here. Districts all around are going full remote, but Wichita, who should be the leader, is pushing to have six to 12 weeks back in person. And while they tell us they appreciate us and give us stickers for our cars, I don't need them to tell us that we are appreciated. I need them to care that this is dangerous. I need them to value what we do as educators and not see us as glorified babysitters. And I need the board to give a hoot about something other than parents pushing to get them back into school. Remote is hard, but it's going to be a lot harder when people start getting sick." And, you know, I thought I'd get a different opinion, so I, of course, asked my 14-year-old daughter today what she and her friends at Robinson Middle School felt like, and they said that remote learning is hard, and she actually said something a little different, but she said, "Remote learning is hard, but it's better than getting COVID." And I think that a lot of our students feel that way, and as the year goes on, you know, I know we're missing some sporting events. I know we're missing Scholar Bowls and educational events, but the key here is that we all make it through. And, you know, I had another lady say after watching Cheryl's statement from yesterday saying that the school numbers were not nearly as high as the public numbers for the virus. We, the classified staff, are a bit surprised. One of our staff from Mixed Abilities Team tested positive, so now 19 students and approximately eight paras and three teachers are out. And this is just at one building, guys, and it just tends to snowball. And the staff are not only weary, but they're wondering how much the community really values them and the children in the community if we are going to continue to push forward with these numbers climbing as high as they are. And we really need to push back and get ourselves, as we move towards these holidays, in a safe situation. And I'll leave the rest of this for you guys to read because I don't intend to filibuster my time this evening because we do appreciate it, but please know, staff is weary, staff is scared, and they want you to make a decision that protects them and the children that they serve. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Crickets? Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Report, United Teachers of Wichita.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Thompson, and BOE members. I'm Kimberly Howard, President of United Teachers of Wichita. Here we are again. While we suspect you have little doubt as to our position regarding middle school and high school students returning, we are going to state it again. Students should return to the buildings only when it is safe to return. By the numbers you are using from Sedgwick County with a two-weekend date of October 31st, the positivity rate is at 15.4%. It is not safe for middle school and high school students to return, and in fact, using your numbers, it is not even safe to keep the elementary kids and staff at school. We ask that you not listen to your hearts but to your minds. We ask that if you are going to send middle school and high school students back because parents are pressuring you to do so or because the business community is pressuring you to do so, then just admit it. Admit that the political pressures are greater than science and safety. Admit that fears for the social and emotional health of students carry more weight than the physical threat the COVID-19 virus poses to students, faculty, and families. Teachers deserve your honesty. They are educated people. Your presentations have been disguised sales pitches, and they have not been very impressive. Let's look at the claim that attendance has not been overly poor. Students can be marked in attendance some places while only being in class for 10 minutes. All kinds of crazy things are going on throughout the district to make attendance look better than it is. And that 15.4 positivity rate mentioned above, that is the rate once these selected community clusters are subtracted, such as jails and nursing homes. Do you not think those people that work in those places have children and spouses in 259? But again, even allowing you to subtract that out, the numbers still say keep the students at home. And what of the claim, and I mean claim, that there is not a lot of evidence of widespread infections occurring at schools? That doesn't mean much to those struggling to pick up the slack because of quarantined staff and a lack of subs. And that definitely doesn't mean much to those middle school and high school teachers who will have students in a much more infectious age group. The insanity of staffing at the elementary level will only worsen. I know this is not an easy decision. I know there is an enormous amount of pressure on each of you tonight, but it simply is not safe for any grade-level students to be in the buildings right now. Look, you know, and our teachers know that we cannot advocate striking. You know, and our teachers know that we cannot advocate a sick-out. And we all know that too often, the BOE and district administrators take advantage of this disadvantaged position the district's educators find themselves in. Do not take further advantage of our teachers. Do not add injury to insult, and do not push our teachers to the brink because we're just about there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Under Email Public Comment, None Submitted. Education, None Submitted. Consent?
All right. The end of the consent agenda. Ben, do you have anything to pull?
I have nothing to pull.
Ernestine?
I have nothing to pull.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, nothing to pull.
Mike? Stan?
Stan Reeser, District 4, no consent items to pull.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, nothing.
And Cheryl Logan at large, nothing to pull. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, so moved.
Ron Rosales, District 6, second.
Okay. Julie Hedrick moved that we accept the consent agenda, and Ron Rosales seconded it. Would you please cast your vote? If I can find my machine. You may have to lift things. Motion passes seven, zero. Next item?
Under Policy, None Submitted. Operations, Follow-Up Discussion with the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids. At a special BOE meeting on October 30th, Board President Cheryl Logan announced that the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids would report to the board again at the regular meeting on November 9th. These medical professionals will offer perspective on future use and interpretation of key data indicators related to schools. Also on October 30th, the board reaffirmed its October 20th decision with one modification. High schools and middle schools will implement the Blended On-Site My School Remote Model on November 12th. Tonight's agenda item provides an opportunity for the board's discussion with the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids and/or appropriate action.
Dr. Thompson?
To President Logan and Vice President Hedrick, I am here to introduce to you Dr. Terran, Paul Terran. And so as I call your name, if you can get in position to where you need to be, there are mics here, and there's also one behind if we need it. Dr. Paul Terran and Dr. Rebecca Ready, if you can kind of wave your hand so everybody can see, and then Dr. Kelly Netson. Okay? And they are here at the pleasure of our president of our board to visit with you and give you a COVID-19 update. Dr. Terran?
Good evening. Thank you, President Logan and Dr. Thompson, for allowing us to be here and kind of talk tonight about this. I think, as we know, we're all kind of coming to this meeting with some heavy hearts and trying to make some wise decisions, and hopefully, if we can bring a good update about COVID-19 in our community and our hospitals and what's happening with kids and adults in our community, hopefully, we can help. So as I go through this, please let me know if you have questions, and if I'm going too fast or if you need me to repeat anything, okay? So again, we represent the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids. We have four members here.
I'm sorry. I didn't see Kimber behind us. Kimber Cassett is also a member of this group, and I want to officially invite her to, she's at the podium if you're available. So she is also a member. So I'm sorry, I didn't want to be disrespectful to you, but I also didn't want to be disrespectful to my colleague that I didn't see sitting behind me. So come on up. Thank you. I'm sorry.
And so for tonight, our goal is kind of, to map it out, we're going to report a little bit about how COVID-19 is affecting the hospitals in Wichita and Kansas, discuss a little bit about the school-based transmission and how that impacts the wider community burden of COVID-19, review the importance of onsite education for our kids, and try to discuss Wichita Public Schools' role in the city's COVID response, and answer questions as we're able to. So quickly, just some stats and data from the national perspective of COVID-19 in children. There have been over 900,000 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in children in America, and that's about 11% of the all confirmed cases. Most kids have mild symptoms, just like a cold, or maybe even are asymptomatic. There are kids that do get severe illness, but that is rare. Across states throughout the nation, about 1.7% of COVID-19 cases result in a hospitalization for a child, and 0.01% result in death. There have been a total of 123 child deaths in America due to COVID-19. There are certain medical conditions that make kids at higher risk for severe illness, and nationally, we've seen that Black and Hispanic children have shown higher numbers of severe illness and death. This is likely due to some socioeconomic risk factors. Here in Kansas, there's been about 3,000 cases in kids 0 to 9, and almost 7,000 cases in kids 10 to 17. There have been a total of 73 hospitalizations, which is just under 1%, or point, oh yeah, just under 1% of the confirmed COVID cases have resulted in hospitalization. There have been no deaths in children, and then there have been school, daycare, and sports clusters that you can see there. And this is updated as of sometime today, but as you know, the stats are always changing and increasing from the health departments, too. If we look at the broader community and including adults, if you look at that third line, in the United States, we're at over 10 million cases in our nation, about 500,000 hospitalizations, and over 238,000 deaths. That's about 5% of people diagnosed with COVID end up being hospitalized in 2.4 as the case fatality rate. That was much higher at the beginning of this pandemic when we had hospitals that were overwhelmed, then we got to a better case fatality rate, but we know that we risk having that increase again depending on hospital surge capacities. In Kansas, there's been over 100,000 cases, about 4,000 hospitalizations, and over 1,000 deaths. That's a 4% hospitalization rate and about 1% case fatality rate. In Sedgwick County, we've had almost 15,000 cases, 137 deaths, which is a case fatality rate of just about 1%, and we don't have as much data on the hospitalizations. As you can see in the other tables below, hospitalization rates are more likely in adults, and then when you get to the death rate, especially older than 65, is where you see the big change in the case fatality rate. And so if you look at just people 64 and younger, that's only accounts for about 15% of the deaths that we've seen. And I'm sorry to report these numbers. I know that these are cases, and in some cases, family members and people we know, but just trying to show you the data. So how is COVID-19 impacting our hospitals? As you guys have seen the news and heard reports from other people, we are experiencing alarming high rates of COVID-9 transmission in Sedgwick County and severe illness. The number of critically ill COVID-19 patients may soon exceed the capacity of Wichita hospitals and the critical care medical staff that we need to take care of these people. As you know, the Wesley Medical System and the Ascension Medical System have been increasing their capacity and trying to expand floors that take care of COVID, and we still are facing a shortage. This itself could lead to heartbreaking loss to those people in our community and the people throughout Kansas who will need local, high-quality hospital care. We're already seeing that a lot of hospitals in the state of Kansas who depend on us for transfers to be a tertiary care center for COVID, but then also for simple things like maybe pacing a pacemaker or a motor vehicle accident, are sometimes unable to transfer somebody here and are looking at out-of-state options, and even those are tough to come by these days. I wonder if Dr. Ready has more insight on to the hospital.
I'll just echo what Dr. Terran said. Our KCWK group has physicians and health department officers throughout the state. And I, myself, grew up in a small town. A lot of the small towns, like where my sister works and is a nurse director, does not have the capacity to put a patient on a ventilator, and those small communities need resources. Wichita is stressed right now, not for ventilator capacity, but for the capacity of those highly-trained medical personnel who know how to run them. We only have eight pulmonologists in this entire city, and two of them are out sick, and I'm sure you can all imagine with what. Respiratory therapists, nurse anesthetists, and ICU workers, nursing staff in particular, are at a short supply, and a lot of that is a structural problem. I don't think that, you know, the hospitals have decided to stop their elective surgical procedures yet. They have not started, decided that they want to pay their nurses hazard pay for coming in to work on a very stressed COVID unit when they've already worked several shifts that week. There's just a lot of structural problems that we have. Even if we did have the staff to run the ventilators and take care of the patients who are sick, we don't have, we don't have the wherewithal as a community right now to do what needs to be done.
I think when you see those colleagues and friends that you've seen around the hospital or you went to school with and knew throughout residency who are stressed to this point, it's tough to see, and so we're thinking of our adult colleagues, and we're taking care of the kids as best we can, too, but the COVID-19 situation for our hospitals is tough right now. So moving forward, as you know, I, myself, and our KCWK group were instrumental in helping KSDE develop the gating criteria back in August, and then, as you guys adopted with some modifications from that. We do think the KSDE gating criteria provides good insight into the community burden of COVID-19, but does have its limitations. It was developed prior to having national and local data about how COVID-19 is the transmission in schools and the efficacy of the COVID mitigation factors that we do with wearing masks and keeping kids distanced. It was also developed with the expectation that the larger community would implement safety measures in response to high levels of COVID, and not that our community thought that the schools were the only people responsible or had the power to change the trajectory of COVID. And so now we know that we need to look at local school transmission rates as best we have them and look at some more data as we approach further learning model decisions. So quickly, for school-based transmission, so far, school-based transmission of COVID-19 appears to be relatively low compared to other community transmission rates. But we do know that as the community burden of COVID-19 increases, the risk of school-based COVID-19 transmission increases. We know that COVID is getting closer to all of us around us, as we know that several months ago, we maybe didn't know anybody with COVID, and now we're at the point that most of us know somebody who's been hospitalized or severely sick with COVID. We do know that Wichita Public Schools has implemented a strong safety plan for onsite learning. That includes multiple layers of protection, and we do know that many surrounding districts have utilized onsite hybrid and blended learning plans for middle schools and high schools, and up until recently, we're very successful with those. And so how does onsite education impact the community at large and the community's COVID-19 rate? Children in schools do not drive the COVID-19 spread in our community. That graph that we're seeing on the Sedgwick County Health Department, that's not caused by kids being in school. Adult behaviors in the community do. Closing schools to in-person attendance without other community mitigation measures will have a minimal impact on the transmission of COVID-19 in our community. Rather than closing schools when community transmission is high, we need to be smart as a community and shut down the places or restrict the places or put mitigation measures in place in the places that we know increase transmission, and some of those include universal masking, limits on large gathering, and other things.
Say that part again, your question.
Yeah, sorry. Just finding ways to do those universal masking, social distancing, limiting large gatherings, right? So then we have to know about the risks of onsite education, and we, from the beginning of this, we've known that the success of onsite education is going to be what the community burden is, because at this point, what we think and what the numbers are showing is that whether you're a student onsite, a student in remote, or a teacher onsite or remote, you're more likely to get COVID-19 from a community contact. But then we know that then you can bring it into the school. And depending on the adherence to the safety measures and just what we do in our general workday, there's nothing that we can do that completely decrease or eliminate the risk of COVID-19, but somebody who's asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic or just has mild symptoms could transmit the virus to others, to a lot of others, and possibly result in more COVID-19 clusters. We know that high school students are at a similar risk to transmit COVID-19 as adults, and even the Sedgwick County data and the percent positivity rate in those teenagers is the highest of any group, and younger children are at much lower risk of transmitting When we think about the learning models, we also try to weigh in the risks of the long-term remote learning. That has been shown in literature from past studies and also forecasting what we know about kids and education and what they need. Long-term remote learning is going to lead to decreased academic achievement, accelerated education inequality, especially in our city when we know that other kids are in school, decreased long-term earning potential for these students, family economic impact, especially those families that rely on hourly wages and other kind of work that you have to be onsite for. It will have a negative impact on working women and those moms. It will lead to decreased utilization of school-based mental health and support services, a risk of worse mental health outcomes for students, increased risk for child maltreatment and physical abuse, sexual abuse, and supervisory neglect, increased risk of adolescent behaviors, and reliance on low-quality childcare. So closing USD259 schools to onsite learning will accelerate education inequality in our community. We know that students at higher socioeconomic risk, which many students in the district are, or students who have weaker academic skills, are at a greater risk for poor outcomes from remote education. We know that the negative effects of long-term remote education will disproportionately affect students in lower grades, especially as they have, or it's much harder to educate them on those virtual formats. And then we know that a lot of parents and families with those pre-K through 6th grade students, they won't have a good alternative to onsite education, and that alternative might be poor quality childcare in homes or other non-school group settings with less COVID mitigation measures and less support for remote learning. So the question is that if you close down the pre-K through 6, is that going to have any impact or even have a worse impact on the COVID-19 transmission within our city? You guys have talked to us about athletics and extracurriculars before. Simply, just to state it, contact sports played indoors will be very high risk for COVID-19 transmission this winter, especially as our community numbers increase. Spectators at those indoor sports will be at very high risk for COVID-19 transmission. We've already seen in the Wichita metro area that there have been several COVID-19 clusters related to school-based sports that have led to entire high schools being closed. And so as leaders, you guys must weigh the value of extracurriculars compared to their risk of further COVID-19 transmission in those activities and school closures. But again, we have the question that if school-based sports are restricted, but our community does not go the same direction, and then there are other kind of club teams or other kind of supporting events in our community with less mitigation factors, and would that even impact the community COVID numbers in the way that we want them to? We've talked a lot with- We've talked a lot with Kimber, who's working harder than probably anyone in the city on getting good numbers and tracking all the data. And you guys have done a great job, the district has, of providing that information to the public and just track it within the schools. But going forward, I think we're in COVID for the long run, and we don't know exactly when we're going to get back to good onsite education. So as much as we can continue to track academic outcomes and then COVID-19 and safety outcomes with site-specific data will help everybody in the district and in the city make good decisions. With that, also being able to understand the staffing situation and even when people are too far out or too many people out with quarantine and when it's unsafe to have kids onsite is important. And so I'm going to run through some of the things that our group, our group of more doctors than just the group that's here have thought about how do we advise school districts. And so for USD 259, we know you exist to educate our children, and you guys should not be forced to deprive some of the most vulnerable students in our community of their right to an appropriate education. We also know that any decision that you guys make tonight will not be able to reverse the high rates of COVID-19 in our community, unless the community also does things. So USD 259 leaders and the staff, the parents, we should all advocate for more community responsibility to control COVID-19. This includes official policies and just a culture of adult responsibility. We know that a strong and inclusive public school system is essential for the short and long-term recovery of the COVID-19 pandemic in Wichita. And district leaders must consider ways to improve the long-term academic outlook for all students, provide as much safe onsite education as possible, and buffer the harms of long-term remote education. When we talk about the pre-K through six or the elementary school students, we should find ways to focus our resources, space staff, and effort on allowing these students as much as possible to continue onsite learning models even when we have high transmission. In the original kind of gating criteria from KSDE, there was a page about using community buildings, using those empty middle schools and high schools and finding even more ways to space out kids besides just in their own elementary school. But then also, we have to know that we have to be ready to close schools, buildings, or even move all the elementary school students to hybrid or the full My School Remote. If there's large hotspots or clusters, there's increased school-based transmission that kids bring into school and transmit it among the other students and staff at the school or staffing limitations. All students in USD 259 who are below or near minimum learning proficiency or otherwise at risk deserve special attention, we believe. So even in times of high community transmission, we'd love to see schools be able to develop safe ways to bring individual students or small groups onsite for educational support to counteract the negative effects of long-term remote education. And so we're here to answer any questions. I think all of us thank you for just serving our children and our community and with wisdom and thoughtfulness and the, that you allow us to be here to kind of talk through some of these things. But we're here for questions.
Mike?
Good evening. The first question that I have is, is we talk about, you were talking about athletics in the metro area. That's not just Wichita, correct?
Yeah, correct.
So you're including Valley Center Derby who reported clusters. We have not reported any clusters in Wichita 259. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I don't know all the details for Wichita Public Schools, but from what I've heard, you, that your athletes, your coaches did a magnificent job this fall with sports participation.
That's why I'm bringing that up because our students that are playing athletics and our coaches worked very hard. And by looking at that statement, it kind of took a sock to the stomach because that wasn't our schools and it wasn't, you know...
I think it was specifically to that, the Derby cluster that I don't even know if it's resolved yet. Valley Center shut down their high school just a week or so ago, that we have seen some transmission in our area.
Okay, and everybody talks about percentages. And we keep talking about it's not safe at this percentage to come back. When it was a five, it wasn't safe. It was, when it was a 10, it wasn't safe. When it was a 20, it's not as safe. What's the safe number to come back? At what point does it, does the numbers tell us that it's good for adults and it's good for kids to come back to school and see face-to-face even in a hybrid situation?
And if I could summarize some of what I said is, you know, I still believe the KSDE gating criteria for the safety of coming back. But what we're seeing that when we are in these red zones, that it doesn't necessarily mean to pull all of our kids out of school. Because we know that, from what we've seen so far, that school, there isn't as much kid-to-kid and staff-to-staff transmission as much on the school grounds when we're following those mitigation factors. Does that make sense?
It does, and this is my confusion, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and I can't remember exactly how many days it was, the county commission voted to allow bars to stay open longer. And the numbers were going up at that time. And I'm thinking, okay, it's okay to open bars later because, and that was a business-related concern, and I know that. But, you know, why was it safe to open the bars to stay open later at that point in time?
It wasn't. And when we look at it, kids don't have, and the parents in our Wichita Public Schools don't have the agency and the respect they kind of deserve from, from our community and for all the adults in our community. And you can't blame anybody for contracting COVID-19. It's all around us right now, and it's stressing our hospital systems. But our community as a whole hasn't taken the steps that they should to get it in a better place so that it would be safe for the teachers and staff to teach our students. And a lot of people are looking at you guys tonight, thinking that you guys have the answer to fix the situation in Wichita and fix the situation for hospitals. And I don't think you guys have the power to do that if we shut down everything. I don't think it would move the needle as much as our community wants it to, and maybe would make things worse.
Say that again.
I think if we shut down school to every kid in the Wichita Public Schools, but our community did the exact same things that they're doing, it wouldn't start improving our percent positivity rate and our numbers in our hospital system. We need bigger change than that, and I know you guys aren't able to do that.
So what you're basically saying is our community is not paying attention to what they need to be doing. And Wichita Public Schools are paying attention and doing the best that they can. Is that a, putting words in your mouth statement?
I think you guys are one of...
Dr. Teran, can I get your back there?
Yeah, and I think this group of people here have been one of the only people, or one of, not one of the people. I think you guys have made wise decisions to protect the health of our students and staff so far up to this point. And I want to commend you guys for that. And so now you guys are faced with another hard decision, and we want to support you in that. And Dr. Reddy has probably better things to say.
No, I don't. I just want to put it different. I think, Mr. Reddy, I just, one of the things that I wanted to give you a different perspective on was the clusters in sports. And, you know, I've got two high school athletes sitting at home. I hope they're not listening to me right now. But I feel like it was but for the grace of God that we didn't have a cluster on our 259 sports teams. And that is not to give a lot of credit to our coaches. There were two schools in the surrounding areas that got unlucky. And that is why they had a COVID outbreak. And I don't think that, I know of any athlete culture that does a great job with social distancing and all of those mitigating factors. Like, that's why we love sports, because adrenaline is rushing. And, you know, our best athletes are those people who are headstrong and know what to do in an impulse. And, you know, it is not an athletic impulse to be cautious and hold back. So I think the world of our coaches in 259, but I also think that, like, that was just by the grace of God as well, that we didn't have an outbreak. And moving forward into our winter sports seasons, these are indoor sports with a lot of close contact. That is a whole different ballgame to play sports like that when your community spread rate is above 20%. That is an entirely different conversation than it was back in August when most of our schools were outdoors or socially distanced and our community numbers were really low. I think it's dangerous to have sports at this time. And then just to comment about, like, what percentage is safe? I don't think that there is an exact percentage in the schools that will be safe, but it will be safer when our community has decreasing numbers consistently. And what I can tell you right now is that we know that the numbers are going to get worse. They're on an exponential curve right now. So we think it's ugly now, it will get much worse. And how long that lasts depends on our community response. Like, this calls for a strong community response. I know a lot of people who are advocating again for a community shutdown, like we had way back when COVID first started and everyone was scared and didn't know what to expect. The problem is that you don't have the power as a board to stop the spread of COVID in our community. But our county and our city leaders do. I just don't know if we have the political wherewithal. And not that, you know, you're not important, you're extremely important. But we are talking about a group of kids in schools who are following multiple, multiple layers of mitigation strategies. I kind of feel like the safest place to be in our community now are doctors' offices, dentist's offices, and schools because there's rules in place and everybody is following multiple, multiple types of mitigation strategies. And we don't have any of that in our community. There's no enforcement of mitigation of COVID.
Thank you for that. I appreciate your comments because those, that's what I'm looking for is information like that. Because that's what I'm seeing. I mean, our schools are safer than we seem to be taking them for with the numbers that I'm seeing. I mean, we've got a few places here and there. And you're right, we do control how people come in and out of our buildings, which makes a difference. But I just, you know, my concern is, is we see something one way and then we're pushing to go the other way. And it just, it's just so confusing to me. And I'm using the bars in as an example because it's an easy one. But, you know, they're going, you know, we're being told to go this way and they're going this way. And all of a sudden, there becomes trauma in our teaching staff because they don't know what to do. And there's no consistency in what we're doing in Wichita.
Right.
And, you know, I'm not fearful to go outside and then go downtown and go to a restaurant and eat, but I'll wear a mask and I'll have it on all the time, except when I'm putting food in my mouth. But, you know, I'm not nervous to go anywhere in the city and do, you know, go shopping or whatever. You know, I make sure I got my mask and I make sure that I know where I've been and what I've done. And, you know, that's just the difference, I guess. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Ernestine?
You said something that I thought that I would like to emphasize. When we made the gating criteria in August, we sure did not know the things that we know now. And I wanted to answer because there have been a number of people that have written to me and said, "You're not following your gating criteria." And the thing that's happened is, is that we've noticed, for example, that, as you pointed out, that just because the community numbers go up, it doesn't mean necessarily that our school numbers go up. And I wanted to ask our chief nurse here to talk to us about the numbers in the public schools because it makes sense that we look at what's going on in the schools rather than what we look at, like what's going on in the people that are going to the restaurants and the bars and the gatherings and the family gatherings. And so I wanted to have you talk to us about what is going on in the schools. And this, of course, is referring to the schools, the kids that are in school because what's happening at the homes, we have no control over. Would you share that with us?
Sure. Thank you. Kimber Kazitz, Director of Health Services for Wichita Public Schools. And we, we have ran numbers frontwards, backwards. There were cases coming in when I was driving to North High tonight for this meeting. So just know that this is not a solid number, right? It's always changing. When we put out our weekly report last week, we had a total of 383 cases. And that was through Thursday evening, okay, on November 5th. So since then...
Now, that sounds like a lot. So it's out of how many?
Well, when you look at that, I know we talk about out of how many. We have 40...
But I mean, is that staff?
That's staff and students.
Oh, okay.
I want to give you some total numbers first before we break it down.
Okay.
Because I want you to just kind of see what happens. Last week, we increased, because we, everybody wants to know what's happened the last two weeks. I don't really need to know what's happened since August 1st. You know, on our website, we've got it rolling there. But you want to know what's happened in the last two weeks. Well, the week before last, we were up by 50 total cases. Last week, we were up by 109 cases. So we more than doubled what happened the previous week, okay? Now, from Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, there's still some hours left in this day for those to come in. We have had 68-plus cases just since Friday, okay? Today, 37 cases on Monday, which is typical for Monday to be a higher day because parents don't call on the weekend. But our staff have the opportunity to call the COVID hotline or fill out the form online over the weekend. And let me tell you, they're doing that. And we appreciate it because that allows us to work and notify people that need to be quarantined, not to come into school on Monday. So we have a lot of staff members that were working over the weekend, nurses, principals, APs in the buildings, myself, and trying to contact families of children that ride the bus, that would be coming to school to let them know that, you know, they've been a close contact, or staff members that have been a close contact. And even though we look at, you know, we've had 50, then 109, and then 68, do the math, because my brain is really hurting today after going through all that. But let's think about that. Yes, we have 90 buildings, 90-plus buildings, but we have some buildings that have over 20 staff members out. This is just our positive cases that we know about in our schools. So we talk about the community, okay? Our staff and our kids come in from where? The community, okay? The majority of our staff members that test positive or students that test positive, it's called likely person-to-person, meaning they don't know where they got it. And that follows the Sedgwick County statistics as well. That's the highest group. The next group is I went to an event or I had a household member that tested positive, okay? So we are really below 10% on staff members that were a direct, close contact to someone at work that tested positive. On Friday last week, we're right at 7.5%. We've gone up a little bit because we had a whole bunch of cases come in, and we're seeing more cases. So we're going to see more links there. For students, we're still under 3%. So it follows what Dr. Teran and Dr. Reddy is talking about. We're not seeing, you know, kids spreading it really back and forth with each other. But we are having, we do record the remote students, and I'll tell you why. They're in extracurricular activities. It's really important that we track that. Every time we have a remote student, my questions are, have they been in the building for anything? You know, tutoring, anything? Are they in extracurricular activities, okay? For our elementary students as well, even secondary, do they ride the bus? You know, are they in latchkey? What's going on? Where do we need to look at the places that they've been in? It's very detailed when we go into, it's not just who was sitting by you in the classroom. You know, there's a lot to look at. And we have some buildings... And we have some buildings that have been impacted. We have some buildings that haven't had a single case of COVID or people quarantined. But we have a lot of staff out. And I would let HR talk about the staff that are out for quarantine, isolation, and illness because that has increased immensely. Not necessarily because they were a close contact of someone at work, but they were a close contact of someone outside of work, a household contact. They don't know where they got it. They went to a wedding. I skipped a wedding Saturday just because I, I didn't want to risk it. I have older parents and my husband has older parents. And, you know, we want to be able to help them if we need to and not risk getting them ill. So there's a lot of things that we need to do as a community. Also, I feel like our mitigating measures in the schools, they're amazing. I mean, I have nurses from all over the state of Kansas that I'm on the Kansas School Nurses Organization with that say, "What are you guys doing?" We share information back and forth. We learn from each other. But everybody is like, "Wow, you guys are really, you have a system in place." But I got to tell you, after today, I was like, it's, it's hard to keep that system in place when you have thirty-seven new cases come in in one day. It's a lot. But we, we, we're correcting all the time. We're like, "Okay, we need to think about this. Did we look at this? What else can we do to make it a safer place?" Every day, our leadership team, I mean, the texts go from the minute you get out of bed till late at night, problem solving and trying to figure out how to make things safer for our staff and our students. So our transmission rate is low in the schools. As far as I have COVID today and Alicia and I decided, "You know what? We're going to play Russian roulette and we're going to have lunch without our masks on because you can't eat with your mask on, right, Mr. Rody?" And so we're gonna, but we're not going to sit at separate tables, right? We do have, we have staff that would not have to have been quarantined if they would have thought about some of those things. It's just honest. I mean, the kids, we're controlling that in the lunchroom. But for staff, we really need to be mindful. You can have lunch in the library or in a classroom and sit six feet apart or more. So we need to think about those things. But when we have kiddos that need direct care, related services, help with diapering, toileting, I know we mentioned our categorical classroom that had several staff members. Those programs have been hit hard because they are in close proximity with our most at-risk fragile students. And they cannot distance when they're helping them with those daily major life activities of toileting or feeding or G-tubes or suctioning and things like that. Helping with diabetic care, assisting a child with inhalers, you know, in the health office. So there's times that we're going to need to be in close proximity of our kiddos. But there's other times where we can distance and, and be safe and think about how we have our groups and how we interact in the schools. But I, I really feel proud with what we have done in the elementary schools. These numbers going up is a community thing and we're trying to mitigate it as best we can. We're not the cause of, of it going up. It's a community behavior model and we really need to pay attention to that. So our numbers are going up and I realize we have, well, Dr. Thompson, forty-seven thousand students enrolled. When you look at the percentage of our kids that are positive or our staff that are positive, it doesn't look shocking. But if you go out to a building that has been impacted, I can think of three today that have really been impacted. And we've got people from our central offices that are going out and covering rooms, covering offices. We've got principals out, we've got nurses out. You know, we are really doing what we can to cover. But how long can we do that with fidelity and with safety? So I think that's what we need to look at and, and make sure that we're keeping a pulse on what's happening in each building and being proactive before we get to that point where we have too many staff out. But, you know, sometimes all of a sudden we get those calls. And we've got twenty people out on quarantine or they're ill today. Well, you can't tell that over the weekend. You show up Monday and that's what happened. So it's a real scenario. And we've got some buildings that it hasn't been impacted yet. But we have some that have really been hit hard.
One of the things that I wanted to, and thank you for all of that information. One of the things I wanted to point out to the public and to the teachers and to those people who are looking at that document that we created way back in August. There've been lots of things that we thought were going to happen or that we didn't know what would happen. And we've learned so much. There's been a lot of research. I was just looking at a study today that it was of four hundred thousand students and that how that the, it was exactly what you said, is that it wasn't the students that were bringing, that when they went back to school, that it was not the students that were causing the community numbers to rise. But it still does leave us with a situation where we have to look at those community numbers. We can't just look at what's in the school. And that's the thing is, is that while we lean more heavily on the fact that our schools are so much safer than the community, we can't ignore the fact that the community as of today was at twenty-three percent. I mean, we're talking about one out of four tests in Sedgwick County coming back positive. And that's a very, very high percentage. I hope that the people will understand that it's not that we're not following what we said. It's that we're learning and learning and learning and we're adjusting because we get smarter. Just because sadly, there's so much COVID that we can do the research and figure it out and see where in August we were not so sure of what we were doing. I mean, we did with what we had, but now we're, and presumably in a month or two, we'll be even smarter, sadly. I wish the public would get smart. That's all.
Thank you. Stan?
Stan Reeser, District Four. I think one thing each of us have come to the realization is that there is no savior out there. I think we first all kind of hoped the federal government would have a national response to a national pandemic. That didn't happen. Then we looked to the governor and state government. And I think the government, the governor tried to, attempted to make some, to take some leadership. She was overruled. It was shifted to the Kansas State Board of Education. They voted in a very definitive five to five vote. So no help there. Then we looked to our city leaders and our county leaders. And we had a couple individual members on those boards that I tend, I think attempted to help us out. But that help never did come. And I remember that dreaded morning when I woke up, and I can't tell you exactly when it happened, but I said, "It's going to come down to the seven of us." You know, we're in a national pandemic and it's going to be seven volunteers who wanted to help their community try to hold this public school system together. And that was the morning that I was literally sick to my stomach. So to get to my question, Dr. Reddy, you mentioned things are going to get worse. And our head nurse basically says we have some buildings under, in distress. If the numbers do get worse, and they will, how much worse will it get for our buildings under distress and in trouble? Because I'm, I assume, I assume there's not a magic number, but I'm assuming that if things, as we know they will, get worse in the community, then we have to assume it will get worse for our schools as well. I mean, it may not be as bad. We're doing a better, we're probably doing a better job than, than what we see out there. But it is going to get bad for us as well. Is that a fair statement?
That's a very fair statement. And, you know, I'm not a genie.
Right.
But what I am worried, just putting, I think, my final, like, opinion about, like, I, I can't predict that. But what I'm worried about is if we, so we will have, we'll have clusters and we'll have an outbreak in two-five-nine soon enough that we feel it necessary, leadership will shut down a school. But I don't want to shut that school permanently because families have the wherewithal with very young children to get through a couple of weeks of mitigation. After that, I think that we might be contributing to the problem. Like if we can get the kids out of school and give the school a break and give them time to have families stay at home and essentially like have a, I'll use my, my own children's elementary school, Horace Mann is having a Horace Mann shutdown. And since the county won't have a shutdown, Horace Mann's going to shut down. And those families are going to pull together so that they don't have increased community spread so they can go back successfully.
Stan Reeser, District Four, that's a very good point. So if we go then to the psychological and problems that are created with what we've been trying to do by remote and losing the normal socialization for our middle schoolers and our high schoolers, is there much difference between holding out till winter break as opposed to starting November 12th? I mean, is there any way to quantify whether we're making the situation worse or best, or better, making the situation better by just holding out through the, the winter months? I mean, it's, what, that's two, two or three months? How much damage are we doing compared to, I guess, the good we could do as well?
Kelly Nudson, I'm a pediatric neuropsychologist. I don't think we can quantify that. I think it's a great question.
And I kind of knew that.
Yeah. I think it's something that we have to consider. But much like relying on USD two-five-nine to fix the community spread, bringing kids back to school full-time is not going to fix the mental health crisis that this has created.
Two months isn't going to correct the crisis.
No, we're going to be dealing with the mental health and the academic fallout from this for years, probably. So I think what makes sense at this point is managing disease spread and then looking at plans to mitigate the downstream effects of that long-term.
Thank you. I appreciate your honest answers.
I, I was quoted tonight that I had said that our school numbers don't match to the numbers that are coming in from the community. And so, and that really is the truth. I spent a lot of time, and my numbers, and I want to say this very clearly, are as of Friday. We've had some changes over the weekend and when we get another report, we're going to see some different numbers. But these are the numbers on Friday, four days ago. There were forty schools with no staff with diagnosed COVID in them. Forty of our schools had no staff. Forty-one of our elementary schools had no students with diagnosed COVID. And that's roughly sixty-seven elementary, something like that, Alicia. And then the numbers of schools include both our middle schools and high schools. We had, I looked at the active COVID staff cases on Friday, pulled the data, and there were four schools that were over five percent of their staff had active COVID on Friday. Four schools. All the rest of the schools had under five percent in the schools. And then I looked at students. And obviously, I just had to look at our remote students and our elementary kids because, you know, we, we, I looked at all of them. There are eight schools that have more than point five oh, one half of one percent. Eight schools had more than point five oh percent of students with COVID in that school. That meant all the other schools had less than a half a percent of kids in their schools with COVID. Now, that does not take into the account the quarantine teachers. That's just our active cases. I believe wholeheartedly exactly what Ernestine had said. We've learned a lot since August when we adopted the gating criteria. And I want to say loudly and clearly, we're not throwing it out. We're still going to use it. We're still going to look at it. But we're going to look at it, I hope, as one data point. I wouldn't ask a teacher to give a grade to a student on one data point. I'd want more than one data point if I had it available. We didn't have it available in August, so we took that. We do have some data available, our district data. We have the information that you're bringing to us as the doctors. So we need to begin to look at multiple data points as we make this extremely difficult decision to bring students back, keep students out, whatever we end up deciding. So we need to, as you have said, begin to look at schools instead of the whole district. Because if we have forty percent of our schools with nobody in them with COVID and no students in them with COVID, what is our motivation in shutting those schools down? So we want to begin to think, a little shift our thinking, not throwing things out, but simply using multiple data points and thinking about what we're, we're doing in, in the, in this whole process. It is critical that we continue to look at this. As fast as this is changing, I mean, over the weekend, we have way more cases than we had when I pulled this data on Friday. So every two weeks, we're going to be coming back and having another kind of discussion. But tonight, we have to decide, what do we do now? Do we bring kids back? Do we not bring kids back? And so on. I think one of the pieces that gets muddled in this discussion is the whole piece of quarantine. Because we have, again, going to Friday's data, we had nine schools that had more than fifteen percent of their staff quarantined. So that means that all the other schools had less than fifteen percent of their staff quarantined. But that's a lot of schools. If we don't, if we don't get a handle on this, because people are afraid to sub in today's world. A lot of our substitutes are retired teachers or others. And, and they think, "I don't have to do this. I'm going to stay home and stay safe." And so our sub pool has dropped, understandably. And we now have our central office people who are qualified going out as needed to sub in buildings. We've rearranged teaching staff. We're doing everything we can. But there is going to be a critical mass of where we can't fill buildings anymore with substitutes. And then we really are doing a disservice to our kids and our parents and our staff. So we have to think carefully. That whole quarantine issue is a driver in this train, even though those people may or may not have COVID. We don't know yet. They're in quarantine and then we'll see. My guess is some of our increase over the weekend came from this building quarantine people. That will be a guess. I don't know that that's true. But that sort of makes sense. You're quarantined, you get a test, you find out you've got it, then you're reporting as a COVID person instead of in quarantine. I, I think we also have to realize that our staff is weary and they are scared. And I understand that. Fear is driven into our whole community right now. And we've got to begin to think, how do we begin to reassure and bring down the fear? Some of the emails that all of us are getting are people that are literally scared to go to work and to go to, to their schools. And we've got to figure out, how do we help reassure those people realistically? I'm not trying to draw the veil over the problem. I want to say, here's another way to look at the problem and here's another thing that we're doing as a school board to try to help us with this. Two weeks, two meetings in a row, last meeting and the meeting before, this board voted to bring back our middle and high school students with a blended model so that they could have blended for those, the parents that chose that. And they also could have remote for those students that, the parents that chose that. And we, so on the table right now- Um, and we, so on the table right now, we really, as I see it, have three choices. One is we uphold what we have said, and that is keep our elementary kids remote and onsite. Because I hear very clearly from you all, elementary's not the problem anywhere. When you look at our suburb schools, they're not having troubles in their elementaries. We're sort of the island where we've kept our kids out to keep them safe. But, but elementaries don't seem to be the problem anywhere, whether it's Kingman or Attica or Goddard or Johnson County. The, the concern is with our middles and high schools and with our athletics. Um, so we, the first option is we, we continue on with what we have already voted for. And that is mi- elementaries in, as a um blended, I mean, as a uh onsite and remote. Our middle schools as a blended and remote and our high schools as a blended and remote. The second option that I see that we have, that we can discuss tonight is, and all three of them, keep our elementary kids in. Because I'm hearing pretty clearly from you all, keep our elementary kids in. And the data says, keep our kids in. Uh, the second is where we do elementary the same, but we bring middle school back with a blended and keep high schools out. Because your number ran through sixth grade, which puts those kids in middle school. And then we've got seventh and eighth graders in our middle schools as well. Our high schools seem to be the ones, and I guess Dr. Turan, Dr. Ready, Dr. Netson, they seem to be the ones that may be bringing it and spreading it more than our middles and elementaries. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, yes.
Okay. The third option is we keep our elementaries the same, but we move our middles and our high schools, keep them in remote. They've not moved. We made that decision. We weren't going to do anything till after tonight's meeting. That's the reason the 12th was the date. So we can leave them both still out on remote. Two weeks from now, we'll meet. We'll see what's changed in the district. The problem with that is the longer we wait, the harder it is to get those kids back in school. We put them out, actually, the governor put them out in March of last year. So we're fast approaching two-thirds of a school year and in March, we'll have a full school year that they would have not been in school at all. And that's a concern to me. Um, but, but I think we really do have so much more data now. And I would ask the superintendent to bring us appropriate data sets as we're looking two weeks from now on, on district data. And we also obviously are paying attention to the community data. Um, because with the documentation that I have from, from Friday, if we were, if we were just putting this into our little color scheme, we would have a green and a, and a yellow is where we'd be. And, you know, I don't think we're going to jump there. I don't want to make that conversion. But I'm saying, it depends on how you look at it is what you end up with. So I, I would like to guide our discussion around those pieces tonight. Because we've got to give our staff time to start settling down and moving in and moving on and not thinking every two weeks, we're going to change the world. Uh, because I think the decision we make tonight, we continue to review data. And if it goes south on us, I would much rather see us put schools out that are going south as opposed to the whole district. If we've got twenty or thirty or forty buildings like we have now that don't have it, why would I want to put those buildings if nobody in the buildings got COVID, students or staff? So that's my two cents worth. Mike?
Thank you. I wanted to uh go to all the emails that I've been getting since this has begun. And I've become, you know, you, you become numb to this information. And you get tired of it. You get discouraged with it. But as I was reading some data Friday, I realized the people that are losing out in this deal are our students and our future. What's going to happen if we, like Cheryl just said, in March, we'll be out a year with high school kids and their graduation, you know, is, you know, last year's graduation, what we, we graduated kids because we needed to. But it was a mockery of the system. They didn't, they don't feel like they earned it because they weren't in class enough to, to earn their, 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 their high school diploma. This year, it's going to be even worse because they're not learning at home. I mean, and this set home with me, with a, a person that called me, that's a teacher, and said, we need to be at home. The teachers need to be at home. Everything needs to be remote. And I, I asked the stupid question, why? And they said, because it's not safe. And I said, you said you had two kids in your, in your house. And she said, yes. And one was a three-year-old and one was a five-year-old. And I said, so how is, how are you going to teach your children if they're in the house with you and they're three and five? Well, she didn't have an answer for that. Then I said, how is the five-year-old going to learn if you're teaching a class and there's nobody else to hold their hand doing the online? And again, it was really no answer. And I said, what are you going to do with a three-year-old that's running loose in the house, creating distractions? So, you know, this remote thing, while it's a necessary evil, and, you know, some people need to do it, we're not teaching our children and that's, that's our product. That's what we put out at the end of the year. When we've been, do our eight hundred million dollar budget, that's our product. It's like Boeing putting out an airplane. We put out students with good educations. And we need to figure out a way, because this is our future. And we're going to have a hole in our future. We're going to have a group of kids that are, is going to dip down. And we're going to see that and we're going to feel that in our economics. And that really hurts me more than all this other stuff that I've heard and listened to. And I keep going back to that. What's good for our kids? And I think the, the proposal that we have on the, you know, that we agreed to twice now, and I'm not sure why we need to agree to it a third time, but I'm going to make a motion here in a minute. Because our product is our students. We need to figure out how to keep them safe. And if that means we need to go to Sedgwick County meetings as a board and city council meetings as a board, I guess that's what we need to do and we haven't done that. But as you can see, I'm doing what it takes to be safe. And I'll tell you what, I don't like this because I'm claustrophobic. But I'm going to sit here on these things and be happy. So I'm going to move, give me a minute. I move that the Wichita Board of Education have pulled its decision for the second nine weeks to have elementary schools learn through the onsite and my school remote model. And the secondary students learn through the blended onsite with my school remote model, both based as parent preference as exposed during enrollment.
There is a motion on the floor by Mike Rodey. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second. Is there any other, do we still have a couple of people who want to speak?
I have a second motion in, in that case. And I knew that might happen. And I'm not surprised. My next motion is, and I don't have it written down, and Mike, if I need to get with you later, I will. I move that we close schools down a hundred percent, send everybody home, have nobody in our school buildings, nobody in our classrooms, nobody onsite remote, no, no nothing. Close it a hundred percent down until we come back in January and see where we're at. Give the teachers a chance to um heal and we can get this COVID out of the way. And what that means is, is nobody's getting paid because, you know, we're not doing anything. We're shutting down a hundred percent. And if that's what it takes to get our teachers safe and healed up, then that's what we need to do. That's my second motion.
Okay, there is another motion on floor to close entirely. Is there a second for that motion? I'm seeing no second, so that motion dies. All right, we do have a couple of more speakers. Ben?
Um, yeah, Ben Blankley, District One. So I guess kind of hindsight first, like September, um, we were out, our secondary was out remote. Um, but really, we could have been in person with the benefit of hindsight. And, and all our, all our first string suburbs were. And so there's inherent educational inequity that has already taken place um that we, we really can't make up. Uh, I'm, here's a question. I guess there's probably no good answer to this one. But was there a perverse incentive with our announcement of, of a return to in-person learning? Like, did, do you think our community maybe reacted to, oh, high schoolers might get to go back to school? Uh, we can, it's over. We can, we can do whatever. Um, you know, we can make our, make our Thanksgiving plans or whatever, I guess. Is that? There's really no good answer to that, is there?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
Is it our fault?
Um, so, okay, well, we'll just cross that one out, out then. How, I, I guess this is a question for you, Kimber. How is our contact tracing progressing? I know the, the Sedgwick County Health Director had said that there's currently, you know, the emergency state law that was passed, that hamstrung contact tracing made it completely optional. Um, and they're not having a lot of uptake in the wider community for contact tracing. But the contact tracing that we're doing in our buildings with our staff and students, is, is that uptake good?
Absolutely. Um, and I can tell you, that's why it takes the time that it does. And um, you're right, I, I've talked to Adrian at the Health Department and Dr. Menz and, and there's a lot of even individuals that test on their own accord that they don't have to report to uh an employer like we do here. And that they don't share that information. So then we have further spread because people are not quarantined. So we do work um hand in hand with the Health Department and um we follow KDHE's guidelines. I know a lot of people are like, why aren't you following the CDC guidelines when they came out with, you know, the fifteen cumulative minutes over twenty-four hours? And I said, we follow KDHE and Sedgwick County's guidelines for that contact investigation. And it is, um, like I said, very detailed. There's a checklist that the nurses have and that they go through. And we look at, you know, are they in groups? Where do they sit? Do they ride a bus? We work with our Transportation Department. That's not easy. They got to pull videos for that and, and look back on the dates, you know, that forty-eight hours prior to symptom onset or if they're asymptomatic for eighty, forty-eight hours prior to the test date. Um, we're looking at latchkey, uh extracurricular activities, you know, do they get related services? Do they get pulled out for speech or sped or, um, you know, ESOL or, you know, PT or OT, you know? Looking at who was actually in that close contact. So it's, I would say it's very detailed and um it is taking a lot of time. But to me, I feel like that's important. I know we need teachers and staff and parents and secretaries and custodians and nurses in our schools and social workers and psychs. We need them there. But we also need to mitigate that further spread um of what's going on. So I think it's very important. We're looking at um talking with the county and KDHE for, you know, possibilities of, you know, bringing testing in and looking at alternative types of quarantine. But none of that has been decided yet. We can't just make that decision without the county. Okay, so I, I'm a rule follower. And um many buildings have heard me say, that's a slippery slope. I, I don't want to say, oh, this time, okay, let's do it that way. We really try to follow the guidelines of what a close contact is, what that means. And um we have a lot of families and staff members that struggle with the household contact piece uh because it's a longer quarantine, because it's an ongoing exposure to the virus as each person in the house goes through that. So um, you know, we're looking at all those different options and how we can look at that. But it, I have been blessed to work, our, our nurses and our admin in the buildings have been great. Uh, like I said, it doesn't stop at five o'clock or weekends. So we try to get that taken care of before we return um back to school and have, you know, not have to call parents after kids have been on a bus and everything else like that. So I think that what we're doing in conjunction with the Health Department, there's always room for improvement. I, I know my nurses get tired of me sending out updates and documents and um, you know, but we learn. I'm like, oh, we need, we need a checklist for this. So we always remember to ask this, you know, so we don't miss that piece. Um, we just came up with a, a protocol for our related service staff, like when they're doing testing, our, our psychologists or counselors or speech or anyone that's going out like to a school and roving um of how they're going to document that when they go into the school. So if we have a case that we can look in the contact log to see if that kiddo was pulled by another staff member, either way, if the staff member tested positive or if, you know, the student um was positive and we need to notify them. So we are, we're working. There's always learning. Every day I learn something that I did not know, at least one thing, you know? So um I feel like we're doing a great job and we're always trying to improve. And also working with KCWK group, um, these doctors and all the other ones on the, the team um are constantly working. They're not, they're not getting anything out of this other than trying to protect our kids and our community. No, no financial gain, just like our leadership uh team in the district. We have a text stream that goes sometimes all night because they're on call. Dr. Tran's on call and he's like, hey, I've got a break at the hospital. I'm going to send you this, all these studies. And we're like, okay, how could we do this? How could we be more safe? So I feel blessed that we have colleagues that um are investing in our kids. And I truly mean that. And um there's just no perfect answer here. There's no perfect answer.
Your hard work is part of the reason why we have so many people out on quarantine. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm not saying that negatively. No, I'm not saying that negatively. I'm saying it very positively. But, but because you are doing your job, we are getting everybody quarantined who needs to be so that we're not continuing to spread the disease.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to. You're welcome.
Um, so, uh, okay. I guess this is a, a question for, an actual question for our guests. Should KSDE modify the gating criteria that they sent out in August that your group prepared? And if not then, should we, now that we know a little, now that we know more about community, about spread in schools?
I think that's a good question. From the, from the state level, I don't think that that'd be helpful. Because every district themselves has modified it in the ways that they wanted to for their community. It was made to serve the western Kansas cities, the smaller towns throughout Kansas and try to serve a place like Wichita Public Schools. When you come to you guys modifying it, in a way, yes. But I don't know if it's as much, um, I think they're good community markers for what's happening in our community. But as you know, you guys have stakeholders from businesses, teachers, parents, us doctors talking to you and you, and so it's more about approach. And you, and so it's more about approaching it and seeing the bigger picture and more data within the specific schools and finding ways to just make wise decisions with that as a tool. I don't know if that's fair, if you would agree.
Yeah, I think the only place that, like the gating criteria, like in its pure form, like color codes and no individual exceptions would make sense is in a extremely cohesive community where everyone participated in public schools. And that's not the description of our community. It's extremely diverse with its opinions and its school choices. So that's why it doesn't work right now.
Okay, that's, that's good information. Thank you. I guess in, in that circumstance, when, I guess this may be a question to Dr. Thompson. When should we send a building to remote learning if, if we, as we have in-person learning? Like what level of staff shortage? Because even if we keep things status quo or even if we put everybody in full remote, we're still going to have staff shortages because we have staff that have to be in person. Probably the majority of our staff will have to be in person, even if we are full remote. So I guess, does that, does that question make sense?
I'm trying to seek to understand your question. But if you're asking about staff shortages, we do have HR here to give you specific numbers. But what I can tell you is that there is staff shortage. And they, the doctors actually had that on their screen as a reason why we would have to take a look at a building to say whether or not it should be, we, we have sufficient staff to safely instruct students. And so if we don't have that, then there could be an opportunity that we would need to take into consideration to look to see if that school needs to move offline for a little while until we're able to get enough staff back healthy enough to be able to, or back for whatever reasons, to come back to be able to open that building back up. So we do have staff shortage and there is no doubt that there will continue to be that as the numbers continue to rise.
Okay, because I know we've had, uh, uh, school districts across Kansas that have experienced staff shortages. And that's why they're, they had to go to a, a full remote model because, for a period of time. And so I anticipate our district is not, is not unique in that circumstance. And we'll have to have that happen maybe in the next few weeks, maybe in the next few months.
That would be correct.
Okay. I guess this is a question for Dr. Thompson and President Logan. Is there, maybe a question for, for Mike. Is there a way that we as an elected body can formally request our other elected bodies to enact those kind of community mitigation efforts that we know we need? Like, you know, a bunch, a document that has whereas a bunch of times and therefore the bottom, you know? You know, is, is that, is that something? Because I know I've, I've individually emailed city council members and county commissioners. And I mean, their email boxes are just as full, if not more full than ours are, so.
And I've talked to county commissioners and city people.
Yeah.
We can do a resolution that we would send to both the city and county if we decide we want to. We would need some help with legal on that, but that is possible that we could do that. I, I'm ready to do whatever we need to do to be able to say, we want to get kids back in school and we need your help. We need the community's help to do that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, like Mike said, you know, if, if we need to, if we need to start dialing into those meetings and, and being a visible vocal presence, I think, I think that's appropriate. I guess, is, so is that maybe something we could, we could draft up for?
For the next meeting?
For the next meeting, maybe?
We could ask the superintendent to bring that back to us and then we could look at it. I hate to vote on it tonight without having anything in front of us.
Right.
But if we got something in front of us, we certainly could look at that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ernestine?
Without intending to, I think that maybe Mike Brody and Ben maybe said something that I want to correct here. And I don't think that you intended it. But there is some fantastic education going on remotely. It is not being a wasted time. It is not as if the kids are not learning. One teacher even sent a, a list of the grades from her department. And it was so impressive because it, where the number of failing students last year at this fall time, they had 11% failing. This year they had only about 13% failing, so that there was education going on. I've seen some of the creative ways that teachers have moved to, to do remote and to do the online kind of education. One geography teacher has used the whole counting of the Electoral College votes to have the kids figure out which states had the highest population. And so they've been able to watch about the, what's going on in the news and learn about geography and learn about population and then be able to say, why do you suppose those states have more people there? And they were able to use their higher order thinking skills. There are some math teachers that are doing some really creative things in which they have kids measuring things around their house. They have them measuring, figuring, finding cubes and finding rectangles. Now, what do you call it when it's a, a cube but it's tall? It's not a cube, like a, like a box of crackers. And having the kids measure those and then do the formula to figure out if that matches. There is some fantastic education going on. I, I say this a little bit defensively because I've taught in person for over 30 years. Well, 25, I guess. But I've also taught online and taught remotely for 12 years. And I even one time taught in which I had kids in front of me and I had some out remotely out into the countryside. So I've tried all of these things and I know how hard it is to be creative and to try to figure out. One teacher was talking to me, my students don't have printers. I have to figure out ways that they can do the coloring of, this was a geography teacher, coloring of the maps on, on their computer because they don't have printers to print them out online. Now, we are doing creative things like sending packets home and sending papers home so they can. But I want to make sure that, because this has been one of the hardest things. One teacher said, this is the hardest thing I've done since my first year of teaching. I feel like I'm a first year teacher all of a game. Because all of the, all of the papers and lesson plans that I've saved for the last 15 years of teaching don't work when you, when you don't have the kids right in front of you to do this. And so I just wanted to make sure that we, we dealt with that, that we know that there's really good education going on out there in our, in our schools. The other thing is, is that some of the teachers that are talking to us about the fear about the COVID, their concern has as much to do with the fear about what, how can I put this? Psychological, they are concerned about the psychological impact for our kids too. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up was that I've been really concerned about whether or not that this remote education was going to cause a rise in suicide and depression. I did a lot of research this weekend. And one of the things that's interesting is that suicide in teenagers has been going up since 2007. It is going, and in some places, I don't think in Kansas, but in some places it has become the number one cause of death among that age group where it used to be accidents. But the interesting thing is that the remote education has not seemed to change that statistic. It has not caused an increase. It hasn't caused it to go down, but it hasn't caused an increase. Where we see adults making assumptions about what the kids, kids are creative. Dr. Thompson, I have to tell the story that you told me about your teenager. I heard this story from, from a parent, not to be mentioned. But kids are so creative. They figured out how to have a, a slumber party where each of them is sleeping at their own house with their phones and stand up all night talking to each other on the telephone for a slumber party. Kids are finding creative ways to, to do silly things with each other. And so I really think that we have to be aware that that. But before I want to come back to you all and your expertise, and Ron, I would like your input on this one too particularly. I have a concern because middle school is not high school. And high school is where I really think the kids can, and that's where I got those statistics about the non-failing and the being engaged and that sort of thing, that's from a teacher. But I am concerned about middle school kids staying out any longer. One of the researchers, things that I found was that if we can have an impact on a kid by the end of the eighth grade, they are not like, like for example, to, to keep them from using substances, for example. They are not likely to use, not likely to become addicted to heavy substances for the rest of their high school time until their adulthood. The seventh, sixth, seventh and eighth grade is such a crucial time of, of, where they still are listening to adults. They'll still pay attention to a teacher. They aren't yet where their peer pressure is more, more important than the teacher or the adult in their life. And so I want to ask you about the idea of, what if we were to take this hybrid, if you excuse me, model in which we leave the, the adult types children, the high school kids doing remote and to bring the middle school kids back doing our hybrid thing in which we do the two days on and the rest of the week? I am concerned that we not lose those, that those kids become just numb to the idea of education being important, not because we're not being good teachers and not because, but because they aren't yet connected to the, the society is going to work better if you get an education. They're connected to what, what the teacher's impact is. I'd like your opinion on whether or not that that would be a good direction for us to consider. And maybe, I think you have the, the thing about the psychological with the teenagers can perhaps talk to us about that.
Sure, so you unpacked a lot there, so I want to, I want to try and hit all of the points. Okay, so suicide rates have been on the rise for a long time. Absolutely true. Youth suicide rates are scary, okay? And we have seen about half of the population, both youth and adults, report some level of mental distress related to COVID. And that's a worldwide finding, okay? That's not just Wichita, Kansas. I tried to get data, but the county data are months behind where we are right now. So I can't tell you numbers right now for this year. Estimates from the first half of the year suggest that suicide rates for the county as a whole were up a little bit relative to 2019, but they looked more like 2018. 2019 saw a bit of a dip in suicide rates in Sedgwick County. But again, that's the first half of the year, so that's not this more recent few months. That was happening over the summer as well, so when we weren't doing any education. So I agree with your statement that remote education, we don't have evidence that remote education has increased suicide rates, nor that it has decreased suicide rates, okay? And I also appreciate your point that remote education is not a lack of education. Teachers are doing amazing things. And there is a chunk of kids for whom remote education is working beautifully. There is a chunk of kids for whom remote education is a disaster. And there is a chunk of kids for whom it is not ideal, but it is holding water until we can get back to the ideal setting in the classroom. I don't think anyone would dispute that onsite education is our goal, okay? But I think our teachers are doing an incredible job of working with kids with what they've got, okay? And I think a lot of parents deserve a lot of credit for helping their kids meet those goals. And the kids deserve a lot of credit for rolling with this and changing every two weeks. I think as Dr. Reddy and Dr. Turian pointed out earlier, the middle school kids are kind of in that no man's land between children where the disease spread is less and high school students where the disease spread is more like adults. So I think it is a reasonable thing to consider. I don't know that there is a right answer from my level of expertise. I don't know if one of you wants to take that.
They're kind of in the no man's land for the way we're tracking statistics too, right? You see those KDHE numbers as zero to nine, then the 10 to 17. And so how many of those 10 to 17 are that, like 10 to 13 year old, right? I, I, I agree, it's something to consider. And that's when you then have to change and try to be like a social scientist, which I am not, about what are those groups of kids going to do when they're onsite versus when they're offsite? So there's so many things to weigh with the staffing issues that you're having and, and what it looks like to bring those kids back in a blended model. And if, when those kids are at home, if they're still in groups with each other. The high schoolers, we assume when they're at home, they're still in some sort of social group sometime, some of the time, or at least more so than the middle school students. But when it comes to peer-to-peer transmission, it's hard to, and peer-to-school and teacher-to-student. It's, it's hard, I think that when we think of the high schoolers, we can think that they're much more like adults. I want to be able to group the middle school kids and the elementary school kids together, but I don't know if I have the data for that.
Not all of them, certainly.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
President Logan? President Logan? I don't know if mine is showing up over there. Can I speak now?
Uh, yeah, you, you're on, but it's way down, but yes, go ahead.
Okay, I didn't know, because my, something's wrong with my thing.
I think, because they're not coordinating the night, so yes, that's fine.
Well, I just wanted to comment on what Ernestine was saying. Yeah, I mean, as a middle school teacher for 10 years, you know, that's the time for intervention and we all know that. And the, you know, the ones that I'm seeing that, and I, I just went to an event here, a safe event with some middle schoolers. And I could already tell just by their actions and just being in a middle school environment for so many years that they were struggling emotionally, trying to articulate what it is that they were trying to relate to us. And it was, it was sad, to put it bluntly, it was sad. But at the same time, I, I mean, I'd be all for getting middle schoolers back in. But now we have another dynamic, which is staffing. And so now we're just going to double that burden on the teachers. And we all know they don't need any more burden. So, but yeah, I, I just, I, I feel that, you know, we could definitely look into, I would say, you know, beginning of the year, I think that Stan was talking about, or maybe it might, but beginning of the year because it, they're, and the ones that really are going to fall through, as we all know, are the, the males of color. You know, the, the males who struggle with middle school already. And this is just another layer, a negative layer on them to say, to quote my students, this is whack. You know, this is whack, this ain't good, this is, this is crazy, I'm out of here. You know, why should I do this, you know? And maybe they're not connecting with some of these teachers that have some very good creative ideas. So you put all those components together and basically you're just rolling the dice. So anyway, I, I definitely would support it if we had the staff. So anybody listening, you know, we all know, we need people to come in and, and apply and, and, you know, step up to help teach our, our young people. We definitely need it. And that's all, thank you, Ernestine, for asking for my input.
Stan?
Stan Reeser, District Four. Again, we're going to have to go back to the savior thing. People are not going to step up, unfortunately. And a resolution to the City Council and a resolution to the Sedgwick County unfortunately is not going to correct the problem. Though I don't have any problem with us doing that, it's probably actually a very good idea. I appreciate Cheryl narrowing down what our choices are tonight. And it looks like option one is pretty much out the window due to the fact that these numbers are just getting out of control. It's just a matter of time. It's just a matter of time until they hit our number, our buildings at a higher number. So that leaves us with option two and three. And the problem, and one side issue that's going on is that they, we haven't, and I admit, we have not done a good job at this. Or we've tried to do a good job at it, but we have not done a good job on it is. We have tried not to put the parents and the students on a yo-yo. That has been very difficult not to do. But that's one advantage to option three is. If we say tonight, we are definitely out. Well, we're in our current, we're in our current standing with elementary. And we're not moving to hybrid or blended on Wednesday or Thursday. And we are out till the winter break is over. And that will buy us time to develop strategies again on looking and, and shifting our criteria. From a statewide thing, which does have a emphasis on smaller school districts and some, and. School districts that have very little to do with what's, what we're facing. So I'm tending to, and, and I. You know, I just reluctantly come to this because I know that the psychological thing is not just suicide. It's, it's millions of things below that serious incident. And people up here have heard me give the passionate speeches about. What we have to do for these kids and these students. But what gets me tonight is the fact that the numbers will get worse. Those numbers will affect our billing at some point. And at some point, we will, if we even try middle school. Then we're going to put the parents on a yo-yo and say, I'm sorry, we tried it for two weeks, but it's not working. And so I think in order to send a clear message and to get off this yo-yo situation. And deal with the reality, and that's the only point I was making about there not being a savior, about a resolution. Or is because there's not, yeah. So I think this kind of leads us to option three and I. Every fiber in my body says, do, I do want to do that. But I think when you take all the positives. The upsides of, of three and the upsides of, of each column. I've kind of conclusion that we almost have to say, we will, and remote is getting better. Remote is, is, the impression I get from, my input I'm getting from teachers and students. Is that they're getting into a rhythm now. And again, this kind of goes to this yo-yo thing, if we take them off, if we put them on this yo-yo again. And those who have signed up for in person and then in two weeks we say. It's, it's bad again, sorry, you got to go back to remote, we've take, we've broken that rhythm. So I'm, I'm, I'm leaning toward option three, unless somebody can convince me here at the very last moment.
And, and I just want to clarify so that our public knows when you're talking about options, because I didn't address it that way. This option two would be elementaries onsite and remote. And middle schools with the blended and remote and high schools with remote. The option three that you just discussed are elementaries onsite and remote, middle schools and high schools are remote.
We basically put a stay on our blended hybrid system.
Which is exactly where we are today, because we haven't converted to the blended.
Exactly, and that gives us time to, I think Ben's trying to make the point, and I know, I know Cheryl's trying to make the point. That also gives us the time to develop a more local gating criteria. That does look at the community markers. But also, and I don't think it has to be formal, I think we can do this internal, but. We not only look at the community markers, but we also look at what's going on in our schools. And we need to start looking closer to these numbers of what's going on in our school and how that's affecting. Everywhere from attendance of our students to the needs of our buildings, because I, I, I don't want to put our buildings. They're already in trouble, in trouble in the area of trying to keep things moving, I just don't want to make that burden even worse on them.
Mike?
I've been told I make too many motions.
You may make a motion, it's up to you. We can wait and finish the discussion if you want to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, one has to do with our. Laptops that we purchased, have we received all of them that we're supposed to have ready to go by last Friday?
I'm not going to open my mouth about technology. Because, you know, it is, I'm, I'm going to say this out loud. Rob has done a phenomenal job of trying to get this, the technology here. It is not his fault that we get dates. And then we turn around and then the dates change. This is what's happening all over the country with things coming in and things, and then. Something is happening in our country that allows those things not to happen. And when you're getting something from China and they're shipping those things here, it is, it is, it is, it is an interesting journey. Not, not being, and I'm not being political, I'm just saying, it's an interesting journey. To how they get here or when they get here or how they don't get here. So I am going to not open my mouth and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague who has talked to the folks today. That could give you as of today where we are.
Rob Dixon, Chief Information Officer. As of this afternoon, we have 2,800 devices that will arrive to our dock Thursday. We'll stage those and begin. We have 16,000 devices, obviously we've been waiting on, 14,000 have shipped. And some of those are still at the port, but they should be arriving over the course of the next, I'd say, week and a half. We can deploy somewhere around between 1,800 and 2,000 a day with the staffing that we have. And we'll utilize those HP devices to deploy to elementary schools. Which I understand was not the original goal of this, but under, please understand that, you know, since our students are remote at the secondary, it's hard to get those devices back to redeploy. So temporarily, we will deploy those to elementary, probably for the course of the rest of the year. Until we can get stabilized back into the regular rotation that we had originally planned. But this would allow us to adjust and if you decide to close a school or decide to go remote. Hopefully we'll be prepared to do that, so. Of those 14,000 that shipped, we have about a little over 11,000 face-to-face elementary students. And then we'd use some overages to assist out and some parent needs that we have, particularly around special education. And then also have a little bit left over to fill in for any student that was at secondary that might have needed. That used their own personal device that now we could deploy them a device.
Ron?
Okay. I guess I'm getting a little discouraged with China and with HP. Oh no, I will. You know, you know. This is hurting our deployment and this is hurting our, our remote and, you know. You know, we approved these in July, if I remember right.
April.
April, well, I gave him a couple of months. But, you know, it's hurting our deployment and it's hurting our, our deal and I just. I, I, I'm concerned that China is messing with us again, but. And then to Ernestine, you, you made a comment that, about my remote feelings and how they're going. I stand by what I say, I mean, I get a lot of emails from teachers that say, we can't do this, I've got kids on Zoom. They're doing handstands in the, on the screen and I get emails from, from parents saying. I can't get my kid to sit here for eight hours, I can't do this. You know, so, you know, I think when you did remote teaching. Those kids wanted to be there and we have a group that, in the Imagine Academy that want to be there. And I'm sure those teachers are doing a great job and those kids are doing a great job, because they chose to do that first. And I think those kids, you know, that's a different deal, I think, but the, the random child. In the classroom, or normal, regular classroom, is probably having less than positive experiences. Than, than we really realize and, you know, there's no way to know because it'd be too hard to track with this many kids. But no, I stand by my statement, I don't think we're getting the education that we need and I think in, in about five years, we're going to feel it. Because we're going to have an, we're going to have a gap in, in education. And a gap in the kids coming out of college into the real world and they're not going to have what they need to do what we need them to do. And I apologize to our, our students for that because I don't know how else to do it, because it's not our fault, but. You know, you guys are getting cheated out of an education that you, you deserve. And, you know, again, that's why I made the motion earlier for face-to-face because. We can't do it remote. And especially when China's not helping us. Maybe now that we've got a new administration, they'll get a little faster at the docks, I don't know, but we'll find out.
Okay, Ron, you did come up again.
Yeah, and.
And I apologize, because I think our queue is not quite working like it should.
No, I just wanted to find out, I know Ben had made a, a motion last meeting about the teachers and, and teaching remotely from home. Did we ever resolve that or was that something that we'd had at table?
It has gone to Alicia, they are putting something together that they'll bring back to us. In two weeks, is that what your plan is? For the remote, to bring it back to us in a couple of weeks? The, the teachers teaching remotely from home?
I'm sorry, so I'm back with you.
We caught you sleeping, didn't we?
Mike got me distracted, okay.
We need to go back to your chair so we can keep track of you.
Very distracted, okay, so we did have a meeting with UTW. And at that time, we still didn't have any ideas that were going to be conducive to ensuring that. All of our teachers would have access to fair and equitable opportunities to work from home. So we as a team have put another team together internally where we're working on some ideas that we have. And we will of course, share those with our UTW colleagues back there. But as of today, we don't have anything to share that's of, of, of something, it's all drafty stuff. So we're not ready to share yet, but we will have something soon.
Okay, I was just wondering, because you know, I know we were talking about staffing issues and that's what's driving a lot of my decision-making, but. I just didn't know if, if something was resolved, if that would alleviate some of our staffing situations. If and when we do start bringing in, especially middle schoolers.
We always know that if we are allowing our teachers, if they are, need to be quarantined and they're my school remote. And that those teachers are, you know. Meeting the criteria to be able to continue to work, that they do work and we have a number of our teachers who do that. And I'll give a shout out to them, because that's good on their part to do that. And we have been able to fill vacancies and things of that nature because of those teachers that are my school remote, that are quarantined. So we have been able to do that, but as far as them being able to, and I just want to make clear for everybody that we're not at this point. Allowing my school remote teachers to make a choice whether or not they work home or not. But that again, is something that we are considering and as we know, there's pros and cons to that, because if they're at home. They're safe and they're not spreading and all those good things. But then on the other hand, you know, there are others that are face-to-face that also want those same opportunities as special ed and so on and so forth. So the question then becomes, do we create that inequity or do we do that? Do we go, do we, or, or do we go on safety? And that's the question of whether or not, how we want to, how you want to work that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, Ben?
Yes, Ben Blankley, District One. So this whole time during the pandemic, what's driven me in my decision-making is focus on the science. And the science is changing and what we learn about it changes regularly. We now know more today than we did in August, when we made the decision that we did. And we even know more at this board meeting than we did at the prior board meetings. And so the reason that I didn't speak up when Mr. Rhodey made his motion. Is because I had my list of questions, I didn't, I didn't want to, you know. But I actually do want to reiterate Mr. Rhodey's motion. And potentially ask for his second on it to uphold the previous decisions on the learning models. In light that we have new data, in light that the first ring suburbs are, they're planning on. In-person or in-person hybrid as of today, all of our first ring suburbs are. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a disservice to continue in a full remote model for secondary learners. Even considering our community transmission. I know we'll have staffing issues and I, 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 I'm certain that we will have to send out. Classrooms and maybe, and probably whole buildings out to full remote. But I, I offer that motion. To the board.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and I want to make sure that I'm clear on what you're saying so that everybody's clear. You want elementary to be onsite and remote, your motion says secondary will be blended. Until the end of the next nine weeks, is that kind of, but we will review, you know, data?
Yes.
Okay. That's basically the same motion that Mike had made.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is there a second for a motion?
Do you want to read my motions?
Yeah, sure.
And then I'll second it.
I move that the Wichita Board of Education uphold its decision for the second nine weeks. To have elementary students learn through the onsite and my school remote model. And secondary students learn through the blended onsite and my school remote model. Both based on parent preference as expressed during enrollment.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion by Ben and a second by Mike, I would like to make one comment before we vote, if I may. I, I think we have to be, if we vote this in, if we vote to do this. We have to be aware that because of staffing and quarantine and new staff. We, we may have to put some individual buildings out. I don't want people to think that we're going to let buildings run with, you know, five teachers when there should be 50. Because the quarantining of staff is our huge issue with, with the my remote. And I don't think that's an, an issue that is a issue that is insurmountable. But we are going to probably end up putting some buildings out. One, one building at a time if we have to do that, because we don't have enough staff. And that's what our suburbs are seeing as well. Okay, that said, Stan?
Stan Reese, District Four. Ben, I, I think the problem with that motion is, again, goes back to, we're just going to put the public on a yo-yo. These rising numbers are going to. Create problems and if your motion fails, I'm willing to make the motion that we adopt option three. If your motion fails.
Okay. I'm seeing no other comments, if anybody wants to say anything, this is your time before we vote. Okay, it is time for us to vote, vote on the motion to have elementaries onsite and remote, to do as we do now. And to have secondary back in with a blended and remote. So that we get all of our students back in school, understanding that we're going to watch the numbers locally very closely. Okay? Okay? Please cast your vote. Whoops, not quite there, sorry. I'm sorry, the motion was made by Ben and seconded by Mike.
See, Joseph went straight to my name.
Ernestine? There we go. Okay. Motion fails four to three. The yes votes were Ben Blankley, Mike Rody, and Cheryl Logan. The no votes were Julie Hedrick, Ernestine Crable, Stan Reeser, and Ron Rosales. So that motion fails. And Stan, you wanted to speak next?
Sure. Stan Reeser, District Four. I move that we adopt option three. And I guess a question, a kind of a side question on this is, does that mean there's even a need for a November 23 meeting, if we know for sure that we are going to, I'm hearing a, a yes, maybe in order to still go over the numbers? Okay, that's fine. I move we adopt option three, and if, Cheryl, you want to fill in the details again on what option three is again?
Okay.
I didn't write it down for word, for word.
Option three is onsite and remote for elementary schools, just as we have it right now. And the next middle and high schools would both be remote, just as they are right now. We wouldn't pull them off remote, until the end of the, well, you said until the end of winter break, which is not quite the end of the nine weeks. It's, the end of the nine weeks is in the middle of January, isn't it?
So it'd be easier to put the end of nine weeks?
That's an easier transition for the district.
Okay, until the end of the second nine weeks.
I second that. I'm seeing no one that wants to speak, so please cast your votes. A motion was made by Stan Reeser, seconded by Ernestine Crable. Okay, motion passes five to two. The yeses are Julie Hedrick, Ernestine Crable, Stan Reeser, Ron Rosales, and Cheryl Logan. And the noes are Ben Blankley and Mike Rody. So the motion passes. We will be keeping our kids exactly as they are now. We need to make sure our buildings are aware of that, so that they can contact parents and continue to work. With that, I think our discussion is finished, so we will be ready for the next night of Mike. Oh, before we do that, I'm sorry. I really, really am so grateful to those of you who came tonight to help us. Dr. Turan, Dr. Reddy, Dr. Netson, and Kimber, you have been superstars for us, and you have been more than patient as we've struggled with these decisions, and we greatly appreciate your time and your effort and your willingness to help us. So thank you very, very much, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Mike?
Under Finance, None Submitted, Miscellaneous Superintendent's Report.
Okay. What can you do to answer to that, right? Next item?
Board of Education Report Request.
Ben?
Ben Blankley, District One, I have nothing.
Ernestine?
I would like to find out about the negotiations, or not negotiations, but the talks that, that the school board has been having with the Park Board and the city about Griffith Elementary. So if we could have an update on that at some point in the not-too-far future.
Yeah. Could you do a request there? Oh. It's, I'm sorry, I can see it, but I can't get to it. Yeah, thank you very much, Ernestine. Julie?
Nothing.
Mike?
I'd like to thank everybody for the conversations we had tonight, but I would like to pass along one thing. You know, I set up a, I made a motion, and Ben did too, to get kids back in school and get kids educated again. And I would really prefer, and unless you have something to say that's different than that, I've heard all your emails about putting kids back in school. Don't email me unless it's something special, because I'm tired of reading emails about how we're, we're doing this. You know, if there's something new, something special, email me, but, and I'm going to catch hell for this, and that's fine, because I'm tired of getting a thousand emails that are 10 pages long and hard to read, and Esau's up there shaking his head, no. You know, I'll trade you, but, you know, if there's something new that you want to say, you know, I'm for getting kids educated, and as you heard me today, I made a plea, because we're going to have a loss of education. We're going to have a gap when the colleges, the colleges, these kids are going to flunk out of college because they don't have the background. And I've seen it. And, you know, this is, this is, you know, we talk about, we, we used to talk about how kids needed to be reading by third grade, or they're going to be in prison. This is, I think we're going to find out something worse here in the next 10 years. And it's going to take a while for this to sink in. But, like I said, email me if you've got something new you want to say, but if you're a teacher telling me how you're overworked or overpaid, underpaid, or something like that, I don't, you know, I get it, I get it. But let's talk about something new now, because I tried to make a change, and I think Ben tried to make a change. And I'm not trying to throw my other board members under the bus, but, you know, I want to make it clear that, you know, enough's enough, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Stan?
Stan Reeser, District Four, no report.
Ron?
I just want to say thank you to Colonel Hester. I was referring earlier to a, an event I went to, and it was a safe event, it was for some middle school JRTC, and by no way did I mean that they were sad in the way that they didn't represent. And so I want to make sure that if the students are listening, Colonel Hester, you know what we saw. And it kind of feeds into what Mike is saying about the, the quality of education that we owe our students. And I was just thinking, when I was watching that, you know, we could throw a lot of statistics and science into all these decisions that we're making, you know, but basically, when you talk about the, the safety and the health, yeah, that's all driven by science, a lot of it. But when it comes to education and what we do, that is driven by two things, in my, my view, my experience, and that's your mind and your heart. And if you don't put these two things together and really, really teach our children, we have some problems, kind of like what Mike, Mike was saying. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that it's just a matter of time before we get kids back in the school building. We need to prepare for that, you know, staffing, health, and yes, safety, but there's a lot that we have to learn, like Ben was talking about, that we learned tonight that will guide us in this next meeting, and hopefully for the January session when we get back into school. So parents, it's, it's just going to happen. We're, we're just going to have to have students back in class. And I, I know it's something that's going to be hard, but, you know, we've, we've done a lot, and we've learned a lot. And hopefully, things are changing, where we can get some support from, you know, certain individuals, up the chain, but we'll see. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to follow up a little bit about Colonel Hester and JRTC. We had to cancel our normal events that we do on Veterans Day.
Right.
But the JRTC committee, or community, is still, is still having some events. They're having a, an event tomorrow out at the dock, the airplane, and then there's a couple of other events in the afternoon that will involve a few of our students, and, but, but those will be broadcast live. So please watch them if you can, because our students are very much engaged and involved, and we want to honor our veterans on Veterans Day tomorrow, or day after tomorrow. Okay, nothing else? So next item?
Winter sports.
Oh. I'm not, tonight, we're not talking about winter sports. We certainly could deal with that at a later time. Okay? Next item, Mike?
New business?
I'm seeing none.
Executive session?
I move that the board recess into an executive session to discuss the current status of negotiations between the BOE and the United Teachers of Wichita pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, exception as allowed under KSA 754319, and the board return from executive session to this room at 8:45.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor made by Julie to move to executive session. Is there a second?
Ramisonas, District Six, second.
Move by Julie and seconded by Ron to move to executive session. Please cast your vote as soon as it comes up. Seven zero, we are in executive session.
Stan Reeser, District Four, second.
It's been moved by Ernestine Crable and seconded by Stan Reeser that we adjourn the meeting. Our clicker's gone away, so please raise your right hand. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. We will see you in a couple of weeks.